Let's go, go right. All right, let's stand up, we're gonna salute the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, welcome, everybody. First of all, this is our first session of the new year, it was kind of brought to my attention, so happy new year, everybody, a little belated. So, the notice requirements of the Oakland Public Meeting Law of this meeting has been satisfied. A copy of notice having been sent to the Asbury Park Press, News 12, and the Coaster, and filed in the office of the township clerk on July 26, 2023. Emergency notices, this is an emergency exit through the courtroom doors and two exits at the rear of the room. There's a no smoking policy, no new cases will be started after 10:30 PM, and no new testimony taken after 11:00 PM. All meetings will be video and audio taped and shown on the Township of Ocean Community Cable Channel, Channel 22 on Verizon Files, and Channel 77 on Cable Vision. All cell phones must be turned off, or if you need to make a call, please make your call outside the meeting room. I just wanna make just one comment that Estelle Close, who has a board member here, I think for maybe 18 years or some number like that, has left the board, so I just wanna publicly just kinda thank her for all the services she's been and the hundreds of cases that she's been involved in and applicants, and her steadfast work that she did as a volunteer to this board. So I just wanna thank Estelle for all that. So we have a new case, 4C 402 Sherman Avenue LLC, Block 24, Lots 4 and 5, 401 Grant Avenue, 402 Sherman Avenue. The applicant is proposing a lot line adjustment between Lots 4 and 5 in the favor of Lot 5 acquiring more land from Lot 4. The applicant is proposing a lot line adjustment to conveying a 4,455 square foot portion of property from Lot 4 to Lot 5.
Mr. Chairman, before you get to that, you skipped the minutes adoption, I just don't want you to...
Wait, the minutes adoption? Oh, sorry, sorry, that. Can I get approval for, looking for the minutes approval for September 18, 2023?
I'll make that motion.
Can I get a second?
I'll second.
Great. Are there any questions about the, any questions or comments about the meeting minutes? No, I think we could do it all in favor?
You can.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Great. Okay. So I think, Counselor, why don't you tell us...
So, Mr. Chairman, before we get to that, we just have a couple things to put on the record. Mister, Mister, I'm gonna mispronounce the name now, Minell?
Yes.
Okay, Mister Minell has indicated to us, Mister Convery, that he, his grandmother used to own this house. We do not think he has no financial tie, no other relationship to this house whatsoever. His grandmother does not own this house at this present time. I do not think that he currently has a conflict, but I just wanted to clear it with you that you don't agree, that you also agree that he does not have a conflict.
Thank you, Mister Lekine. We would agree to go forward. We don't feel that there is a conflict with Mister Minell, and we're happy to proceed. And thank you for that advice.
Thank you. All right, and Mister Chairman, if I may, if I can just list the exhibits that I have for the record. Exhibit A1 will be the application itself. Exhibit A2 will be the topographic survey. Exhibit A3 will be the minor subdivision from East Point Engineering. Exhibit A4 will be the stormwater management report. Exhibit A5 will be the soil bearing, boring log. A6 will be the memo dated December 1st, 2023 from East Point Engineering. Exhibit A7 will be the tree report from Green Touch dated November 15th, 2023. And Exhibit A8 will be the photo packet of seven pics, pictures which were just given to us. And then beyond that, we have the following board exhibits. Exhibit B1, as in Board One, will be the Board Planner's Report dated February 20th, 2024. Exhibit B2 will be the Board Engineer Report dated February 15th, 2024. Exhibit B3 will be the Fire Marshal's Report dated February 2nd, 2024. Exhibit B4 will be the Public Works Report dated January 19th, 2024. And Exhibit B5 will be the Environmental Commission Report dated February 21st, 2024. And Mister Convery, if you can just confirm that you do have all those exhibits that I mentioned?
We do have all of them.
Okay, so now, with that said, Mister Chairman, I'll turn it over to Mister Convery to give his introduction and to put his representation on the record.
Great.
Good evening, Mister Chairman and members of the board. My name is Michael Convery, I'm an attorney in Shrewsbury, New Jersey, and I represent Fort C 402 Sherman Avenue LLC. As the chairman indicated, this application concerns two properties within the township, specifically 401 Grant Avenue and 402 Sherman Avenue in the township, both located at Block 24, Lots 4 and 5. Tonight, as a part of this application, we have one witness, Mark S. Lieber, who's sitting to my left. He is a professional engineer and professional planner with East Point Engineering in Marlboro, New Jersey. He's here tonight to testify to the planning design, the planning, I'm sorry, the engineering design, the planning implications, and any of the variance relief that's being sought. He's here to testify, and we are gonna mark for tonight's hearing two exhibits, and if you're, Mister Chairman, you'd allow me the first exhibit that we would mark, and I think Mister Lekstein said this would be A9?
A8.
A8. So A8 would be a five-page, actually four-page photograph that I presented to the board.
It's seven photographs.
Okay, so yeah, to be clear, the first page is one, two photographs on Page 2, two on Page 3, and two on Page 4, which Mister Lieber will testify to. And as well, we're marking for the board a site plan, a layout, grading, and utility plan that's now gonna be marked as A9.
And what's the date on that grading plan?
This grading plan is dated, if my eyes were better, I could see it more, 2/28/23.
Okay. And East Point did that, I assume?
Yes, it's done by East Point, and it's signed by Mark S. Lieber, who's to my left.
Thank you.
So other than that, I'd like to ask Mister Lieber, Mister Lieber, if you're ready to proceed, Mister Chairman?
Yeah, I think what we might wanna do, since you kinda gave us an overview of what's going on, I think we might wanna hear from our professionals first, just see what the issues they may have, and then that might help your person who's testifying focus on that.
Sure, I'll summarize. Basically, the thrust of the application is to just relocate me a lot line. With regard to variances, the only variance that's necessary is the existing setback on new Lot 4.01, which is a house that is not being changed, and there's no development proposed on that lot. Otherwise, there's no, there are no variances associated with the application. There are some issues with trees that really I need to discuss with the board, and it's probably good that I discuss it even before the applicant presents his case. Mister Lieber had presented a letter to me on Friday, and the applicant had hired a tree expert to go out and look at the site and do a report. Unfortunately, there are problems with both of those items that I'll discuss with the board. The first is with regard to, I think it's green leaf, the, a green touch, is that they list 13 trees, but basically they tend to disregard the ordinance. And the number of the trees that they're listing don't list the diameter of base height, where the ordinance says if the diameter of base height is six inches or greater, and they take the tree down, they have to replace it with a four-inch caliber tree, or two two-and-a-half inch caliber trees, or a donation of $350 to the Shade Tree Fund. And so it's not possible to tell from this list actually how many qualifying trees they're taking down. So I can't determine anything from that list. Mister Lieber presented a letter to me on Friday, and I think that's in the file, right?
I don't believe it is, because it was less than 10 days.
Maybe it isn't. And he, as with many, many people, got confused because there are two tree removal ordinances in town. There's the one that's in the zoning that applies to site plans and subdivisions, which would apply to this. And then there's another one that applies when they don't have a site plan and subdivision. And his letter to me quoted the other one, which happens frequently. It's not, it's not a criticism of him. It's a criticism of the fact that we have two separate tree ordinances that conflict with each other. So when I look at those two things, first of all, I think that we have to clarify, you know, what the obligation is, and I don't think we can do that tonight. But I also think that could be a condition of approval. The other thing is, and I'll take responsibility, because in my letter to the board and for the applicant to consider, I left out the fact that street trees are required. Whenever you have a subdivision, the ordinance requires street trees every 40 feet, or the equivalent of every 40 feet on a lot, if there's a subdivision. So when I calculated that today, it requires 13 street trees when you consider both 4.01 and 5.01. And 5.01 is the lot where the new house is being built, that's being expanded in area. And when I looked at this, there's, first of all, there's two things concern me. The first is, there is a contract, I'm sure, between the owners of Lot 5 and Lot 4 to give a certain number of square feet to Lot 5, create Lot 5.01, and then Lot 4.01 stands separate. There are no street trees on Lot 4.01, and I don't know how, if we were to require street trees to be put on Lot 4.01 where there's no development being proposed, other than the fact that the subdivision line is being moved. I don't know how that affects their contract and whether it would kill the deal or not. And that's something that needs to be discussed. And then the other issue is, it's not certain as to how many existing trees are going to qualify as street trees, there are some. So I think the obligation is gonna be around five street trees, if you just look at 5.01. If you add 4.01, it's gonna be about 11 street trees. And that, whatever that number is, it will probably negate the need for any contribution to the Shade Tree Fund. But without having, having everything really nailed down, I can't tell for sure.
Well, is that because there was no inventory done before all this happened?
There was an inventory done, but it was, the inventory done by Green Touch was, was really inaccurate. Because it didn't, for example, he lists 13 trees, and tree number seven is a black gum tree. This diameter of base height is not applicable. So I don't know what that means. Tree number eight, same thing, not applicable. And then there are some holly trees that are shown here that, again, it says the diameter of base height is not applicable. So I don't know what that means.
Okay. Let's just, you know, let's take a timeout for a second. So let's put the tree, let's put the tree thing on, let's just put a pin in that for a second.
You know, it can be a condition of approval that would, have to be submitted before the resolution is approved.
So let's just put the tree thing here for a second. So what else did you have that you wanted to discuss?
Otherwise, that's it, I mean, it's essentially a fully conforming subdivision, except for the fact that the house on new Lot 4.01 has an existing front yard setback on Sheridan. It's non-conforming, and it's not being changed or anything. It exists now, and it's not being affected by the subdivision.
Okay.
So I really, I don't have any problem with the subdivision at all.
Okay. Putting a tree aside, anybody have anything left for Jim before we go to Bennett? No? Okay. Bennett, did you have anything that you wanted to add on your?
Yes, thank you, Mister Chairman. Just a couple minor things. So there's a note on the plans that indicates that the plot plan is provided for informational purposes only. However, there's a drainage report, and the building is not just a box. Just as a placeholder, it's, you know, a unique shape. It looks like it's been carefully designed, and the house is under construction. So I just want some clarification on exactly what that means and how that affects this application, and whether or not a grading plan should, is required to be submitted or was already submitted to the township. And then there was a minor discrepancy between the stormwater management report and the plan with regards to the amount of impervious surface. That's just an inconsistency that needs to be resolved, and property markers should be shown on the subdivision plan, and that can be a condition of approval.
Okay, anybody have anything that you wanna ask? Did you want to spend anything?
I talk about trees, so you tell me when we talk about trees, Mister Chairman.
Well, we can talk about trees, but I guess, I guess Jim has kinda brought up the challenges with the trees. The tree report, the tree analysis, the tree inventory, so maybe you can...
Mister Chairman, if I, if I just can very quickly, Jim, do you just wanna clarify that? Because it's in your letter, so you might wanna get that onto the record.
What is that?
That, that's not a variance.
That's not a variance, that's not a variance because it's open.
They don't know what we're talking about.
Oh, okay, oh, okay, okay, it's in Ben's letter.
It's your letter.
It's my letter.
Yes.
Oh, okay, okay, I apologize. Yeah, I looked at that, that shouldn't be there, that is not a variance, because it's the open, it's the front porch steps.
So, so they don't know what we're talking about? So Jim's letter indicates that Lot 5 will be increased in area from 25, from 27,665.4 square feet to 30,120.4 square feet. It will be fully conforming with the minor exception of the open front porch steps, which are set back approximately 48 feet, where 50 is required. So he called it out as a variance in his letter, and Jim is now saying that it's not a variance.
Yeah, let me clarify that. I call, I don't think it's a variance. I believe the zoning officer called it out as a variance, which is why it's in my letter and my report. So I think it should be treated as a variance to be conservative.
All right, why don't we just deal with it as a variance, just to be conservative? I agree with Jim, if the zoning officer called it out, let's just...
So it's, so it's the difference between 48 and 50 feet on the setback?
Yeah.
Okay.
We'll provide testimony with respect to that tonight, Mister Chairman.
Okay.
If I could have one second to talk to Mister...
Sure.
Chairman, I just spoke to my client about the second lot issue, because I'm not sure right now, we have a contract with the other individual. Can't the applicant just pay rather than put the trees on the second lot?
It's, the issue is technically it's street trees, and the payment doesn't apply to street trees. It applies...
So that option's not available to him?
Yeah, that option is not available. But just, just so the board, put it context to the board, there is precedent in the township where homeowners do not want street trees. The township has gone to the homeowner, so give us a letter saying you don't want the street trees. These are on larger subdivisions that were approved by the planning board. And then they had not put the street trees in. I'm not so sure of the legality of that.
I'd be concerned making it a condition of approval if we can't satisfy the requirement. So I wanna hopefully see if we could work this issue out tonight, rather than...
You can always ask for a variance.
It's a waiver.
It's a waiver, then ask for, ask for the waiver.
Why don't we just ask for the waiver if we can? I mean, at this point...
I wanted to bring it out so that the board could consider it, because I'm uncomfortable making that decision.
So we're trying, so the thing that you're asking for is a waiver so that you do not have to put street trees in? Is that the...
On the, the existing, on which lot would that be? Is it 401?
401's where the older building is?
Right.
So basically, what the applicant's saying is, look, we don't own that property.
Right.
We have no control over that property. The only, we're just here to do a lot line adjustment, so we don't have the authority to say what's gonna happen on that second lot. So they can ask for that waiver if the board feels so inclined to grant it.
But, wait, hold on, question. We could grant a waiver with a stipulation that they ask the other homeowner if they wanted trees, and if that homeowner decided that they did want trees, then they would provide them. And if they provided a letter to us saying that they did not want them, then they would not be required. Could we do that as a waiver?
That's exactly what I was going to say when you started talking.
Okay.
That, that would be perfect.
Okay.
Okay. Okay. So I think we can kinda...
Yeah, whatever, whatever Mister Higgins has raised, as far as the trees are concerned, we're gonna, as a condition of approval, we'll do whatever's required with that one carve-out so that we are not bound as the condition of approval on 401. We'll ask, and if they objected to it, then we would request...
So Mark, we have a motion for this, we'll put that as part of the motion later on?
Yeah, you can just, that will be a condition of approval if the board approves the application, and you can, you don't have to recite everything over again. You can just grant it with all the conditions previously...
Before we, before we pseudo-memorialize this, does anybody have a problem with, not a problem, would anybody like to make a statement or a comment about what we were kinda suggesting? You okay with... Seems reasonable. Okay, you guys okay? All right, good. Okay. What else we have to talk about the trees about?
I think that's it.
Wait. So I just wanna say that the packet that I have up here only has, it has the cover letter and the first two pages of the three reports. It goes through Tree 8, so I don't have the full copy of the report up here. So Mister Higgins' concerns about the, all the trees not being identified at the diameter of breast height stands as well. But I want to go to something that's in the Environmental Commission's report that states that seven trees have already been removed, that were originally shown on plans that are currently not there. And what happened to the trees? And how does that intersect with this application?
They were shown, I didn't see them shown on the plan.
I'm not even sure.
So to, to read, it was, da-da-da-da. "Tree report includes a plan showing only the existing lot line and the location of 13 trees, 12 on Sherman Avenue Lot, and one on the Grant Avenue Lot. The report addresses the type, size, and condition of each tree on the Sherman Avenue site. The report identifies seven trees close to the west property line, three trees in the southeast corner of the property, and two trees in the township right away close to Sheridan Avenue. There's one tree on Grant Avenue, site located exactly on the east property line. The seven trees along the west property line appear to have been removed. There may not have been a true removal permit associated with the removals."
And I don't see those, the seven trees on the, on the western property line, I believe are still there. When I looked at the site, it looked like they were still there. But I think those are some of the trees that Mister Lieber indicated to me were going to be removed.
Do you guys know what happened?
We, I can, we can speak to the issue. I don't think we removed the seven trees, right? They're, they're still existing, are they not?
Let me swear, Mark, again.
Okay.
Mister Lieber, do you swear any testimony you're about to give this evening will be the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth, so I'll be God?
Yes, I do.
And just state your name, spell your last name for the record?
Mark in the city, last name is Lieber, L-E-B-E-R.
Thank you. And you are a licensed planner and engineer in the state of Jersey, correct?
I am.
Thank you, sir, go ahead.
Hi, good evening. The property that we're talking about, which is Lot 5.01, which is at the corner of Sherman and Sheridan, a permit application was actually submitted to zoning and construction to build this house. The house is under construction right now. And during that construction, whatever trees were on the west side that conflicted with the foundation were removed. And those are the same trees that were noted in the letter I had sent out on Friday as to be removed. So there's a little bit of overlap here, because when the application was filed to move the lot line, we concurrently filed another application to construct the house within the parameters of the existing lot. So that's why there's a question.
So the trees were removed?
Yeah, there were trees in that precise location on the west of that foundation. Some of those trees were actually in the foundation of the house.
Okay.
So the mason had to remove them to form that, that part of the house.
I think he's referring to a tree line that...
Is that the trees you're speaking about?
I don't know, that's, I'm not sure.
That's what I think.
There are trees that are still there on the west side of the house, and I thought those are the ones that you were referring to, Mark, in your letter, that are, that are on the Green Touch report.
That's correct. It's the same trees, but some of those trees had been removed, but it's the same trees that we're saying to be removed.
So what's the...
Where they were removed, Mark, do you know?
You know, our plot plan was approved, um, let me take a quick look. It was approved around September. And then, you know, work started, the house was demolished.
So what's the problem? The problem is all this went to the zoning board first, and then...
Oh, no, it was, there was no board...
No variances.
Right.
So you just took, you just took them down and...
Well, no, there was a review done upstairs through engineering, where they submitted a building permit to construct the new dwelling. And as part of that, we submitted a plot plan, a grading plan, a drainage report. There were architectural drawings for the house. And whatever was shown on that plan was permitted through the town. And the house is currently under construction, I have pictures from today I could show you.
Yep. Okay.
So, but now, now we're talking about moving the lot line, and we're including these, I'm a little confused on this timing as well. When, Jim, when you were talking earlier, you were talking about the trees coming out under the two ordinances. Just trying to figure out under which ordinance these seven trees were removed and how they were remediated.
I'm not even sure it's the same seven trees, because the Green Touch report is dated 11/15/23. And if the construction had been started before, then there may have been other trees on the site that were removed under that permit. Without seeing that permit, I don't know. The plan on the Green Touch report shows existing trees as of 11/15/23. And there's, two, three, four, five, six. There's six, seven, there's six of them, seven of them on the west side of the house. When I rode by the house and looked at the site, it looked to me like they're still there.
I mean...
So I'm a little bit confused, too.
Well, the survey of the property was from February of '23, the land survey. And on the land survey, he depicts those trees which are shown on Sheet 2 of our drawing.
So you think the trees are still there?
I don't know. I think so, but I'm not sure.
What are we trying to accomplish right now?
My goal, Mister Chairman, is to figure out, and to make sure that whatever amount of replacement trees need to be planted, need to be planted.
Right, I understand.
That's what I'm trying to get to.
So that's our, right, so that's our, that's our problem right now.
Which could be a condition of approval.
Right.
I mean, I...
So...
What we need is for Mister Lieber to go out and locate the trees, which apparently are located on the survey, to determine their diameter, one foot above the root crown.
Yes.
And if they qualify, and if they're gonna be removed, then we will know how many. And then to submit a plan showing that and showing the, the required number of street trees. And it may be this could be washed.
Okay.
Jim, I'm just sorry, did you say at the root crown, I thought our ordinance was diameter of breast height?
That's a good question. I think it's two different standards, and I will tell you in a second.
Did you have some clarification that you wanted to offer right now, from what you just conferred with, or...
I spoke to my client, and he said that the only tree that was removed due to the foundation installation was a holly, and that the other trees remain. I think there's some confusion over what Jim saw versus what was on the first plot plan to be removed. But I think if, Mister Chairman, if you're inclined to put a condition in that it's subject to approval, that we satisfy whatever the planting situation is, then we could...
Yeah, I think as long as, as long as we're able to document, as long as we're able to document, get to the truth. That's all, that's all we care about.
And I think that the problem is, is that with that existing application, there were certain things done to advance the construction.
I don't think we need to make this any more complicated than it's getting. It's very simple. It will be, if the board approves the application, they'll have to comply with the tree ordinances. As it works out, it'll be worked out with the board engineer and planner, with the exception of the Lot 4.01 issue, that where we're gonna get a letter from the owner whether or not he wants the street trees or not.
I think that sounds...
That's perfect, great, that's great.
And just to clarify, so there is no confusion. The qual, the trees that qualify have to be six inches or greater, one foot above the root crown. Okay? And the replacement trees have to be, if you want qualification of one, two trees for one tree being taken down, they have to be a minimum of two and a half inches breast height. So the qualifying tree is one foot above...
Yeah, I think first, 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 let everybody, first let me go see what the trees are there. Let's see what we got, all right? And we'll make it a condition that if there are trees that are missing, they have to replace per the ordinance.
Yes.
Okay? That's all we need. Right, Mark?
I, I agree. I, I think we're talking about stuff that we don't need to talk about.
Yeah, well, I guess it's the confusing part was more that your report said something, and their...
It will all be worked out in the long run.
Yes, okay. Okay. Is there anything else that you would all like to share with us about this application before we ask you any questions?
I mean, Mark, I don't think you have to...
We don't, we don't, you don't have to, you don't have to, I mean...
No, I just wanted to know if you wanted to see the... Just to tell you...
How do you guys, you guys feel like you wanna get a walk-through of the pictures?
I mean, it's up to the board.
I think, I think, I think we're good.
They're self-explanatory, but I'm not going anywhere if you have questions.
They're good photography, nice, nice job with the pictures.
Thank you.
Good pictures. Okay. Does anybody, does anybody here have any, well, first, does anybody have any questions or any comments that they wanna ask the applicant?
Can I just get some clarification on my report about the, I guess maybe it's the sequence of events? There was an approved grading plan by the town...
There was an approved grading plan by the township engineer, and then, and then we're here? Is that correct?
Yes, and that actually goes right to your lot coverage question, which was, the approved grading plan showed twelve thousand, eight hundred and sixty-five square feet of impervious coverage. It had a slightly different driveway on Sherman Avenue due to the zoning requirements, but it did not include the sports court, because the sports court wasn't on that plan, because the sports court's proposed within the area of augmentation of the property. And the pool water surface wasn't included. So when you take those three items together, that was a discrepancy between the twelve thousand, um, it's eight hundred and sixty-five square feet versus the fourteen two fifty-one.
Why wasn't the pool surface area included?
There was something in the zoning code that said, when you calculate percent of buildable lot area, that the water surface of a pool is not incorporated into that amount.
I thought that wasn't true under the MS four permit, that it was considered impervious cover.
I, I think it, in the eyes of the DEP, it is, but in the eyes of the zoning ordinance, it's not considered impervious, because rainwater that falls into your pool doesn't run off into the, the street.
But it doesn't infiltrate either.
That's correct. But that's, I mean, that's typically how zoning ordinances are interpreted.
Okay.
Okay.
So that answers, I think, two questions.
Yeah, that satisfies...
That satisfies you?
My questions.
Okay, you sure?
Yes.
Okay. Okay. Anything else we want to talk through? No? Anybody from the public like to make any comment about the applicant? Or have any questions for the applicant? Going once, going twice? Okay. Great. So I think we, I think we have everything here. Can I get a motion on this applicant?
I'll move. I'll second.
I assume you're moving to approve it?
Move to approve? Right. And with all the stipulations that we have, right? Okay.
And I'll second.
Okay, we have a second by Jamal. Yep.
Sophia?
Yes.
Jill?
Yes.
Janelle?
Yes.
Vonbich?
Yes.
Mimi?
Yes.
Karen Weinstein?
Yes. Okay, great. Okay. I think that's it.
Mr. Chairman, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Thanks. Thank you. Okay. Really stumbled through that one, huh?
She's hopefully cool.
Four years ago, yes. That's okay. It happens.
I think the whole problem is that...
Yeah.
Ordinance for the...
Yeah, it didn't, it didn't match.
See what happened with the trees. They got a tree removal permit and a construction permit, which is one ordinance.
Yeah.
And it sounds like nobody's... Okay. We're going to review, are we reviewing and voting, right? On the ordinances?
Ordnances, so, so basically, the board's role is to review the ordinances and see if they are compliant with the master, consistent with the master plan or not, which I guess Jim will take you through.